Good afternoon. It's 4:40 and Mayor Salinas is running a little late, so we're going to go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by our city manager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we gather here today to make decisions for our community. May our personal faith give us strength to act in accordance with what is best for our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Well, we really have a full house today. I want to thank everybody for taking time to be in here today. So again, thank you for being here. And the next item is, Ana, with the Elder Abuse Prevention Month?
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council. The proclamation reads as follows, and I believe we have Mr. Gustavo Salinas here from Adult Protective Services, and he is here to receive the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the City of Mission by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. Whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and whereas in 2015 there were 78,180 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, of which 54,552 were confirmed. Whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels and cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia. And whereas many of these cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in the city and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Proclaimed on this the 23rd day of May 2016.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
May I move to approve?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I want to thank the commission first of all and recognize a couple of my colleagues, Hugo and Maribel Gonzalez. I do appreciate the time and effort that you all take today to help us garner support for APS. At Adult Protective Services, what we do is we investigate abuse, neglect, and exploitation of the elderly that are 65 and over, as well as individuals with disabilities 18 to 64. So if you suspect any abuse, please give us a call. It is a free and confidential call, 1-800-252-5400. Again, the call is free and it is confidential, open 24 hours a day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to come up here for a picture?
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Mr. Salinas, we want to thank you and your organization for doing everything that you can for our elderly community here in Mission. Thank you for you and your staff, and we appreciate you being here. If you can come up here and take a picture with the council, please.
Good seeing you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then three, two, one, smile. One more, and three, two, one. We got it.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Ana, the proclamation for Mission CISD Teachers of the Year.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas teachers prepare students in our public schools to meet high standards of performance, be lifelong learners, and contribute as world citizens. Whereas the Mission Consolidated Independent School District and Sheraland Independent School District teachers motivate and encourage our children through guidance and education to succeed academically, artistically, socially, and athletically. And whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds. Whereas teachers mold the behavior of students through their own behavior to resolve conflict successfully, take risks with new ideas, and model accountability as a standard of adult responsibility. Whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students, and performing community service. Whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of our community. Now therefore, we the City Council do hereby declare our appreciation to the teachers of the Mission Consolidated Independent School District and Sheraland Independent School District and congratulate them for being the 2016 Teachers of the Year. Proclaimed on this the 23rd day of May 2016.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Mission CISD and Sheraland ISD Teachers of the Year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, at this time, I would like to recognize the Mission CISD Teachers of the Year.
Yes.
Bryan Elementary School, and if you're here present, please come forward. Bryan Elementary School, we have Matilde Reyna. Castro Elementary School, Maria de Jesus Ramirez. Escobar Rios Elementary School, Melissa Garcia. Lial Elementary School, Melinda Y. Perez. Marcel Elementary School, Sheila Peña. Bim's Elementary, Guadalupe Sines. O'Grady Elementary, Imba Ramsey. Pearson Elementary, Sonia A. Trevino. Haylight Junior High, Richard Obligar. Mission Junior High, Dwayne Hill Varlak. Don, Don Hill Varlak, sorry. Mission High School, Imelda R. Becho. Veterans Memorial High School, Alfredo Barredo. Mission Options Academy, Armando Salas. And Roosevelt Alternative School, Mario Perez.
Mayor, Council, I also would like to recognize Dr. Ricardo Lopez, who's here with us today, leading this wonderful teachers who serve us on a daily basis.
While they're getting ready, Mayor, City Council, thank you for this acknowledgement. The backbone of our organization and the future of our city lie in the hands of great educators like what you're seeing today. At Mission CISD, we guarantee world-class education for every student, and these teachers are leading the way, and they exemplify everything positive about our culture and our great city and our great school district. We're very proud of you, and we salute their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Get the rapid ears right here.
Okay. One more for Plata. I'll move this one. I'm outside over here, ready for the mayor's, uh, doctor. Look, just, uh, ready for the mayor's, like, right. To balance the picture.
Right there's, right. Everybody look over here at me. Right here, and then three, two, one, big smile. We do one more. And then three, two, one, smile.
Maria Limar.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council, now I'd like to announce the Sheraland Independent School District Teachers of the Year. From Sheraland High School, Mr. Roberto Barbosa. From Pioneer High School, we have Manolo M. Calada. BL Gray Junior High, Nancy Basaldua. Shimatsu Elementary, Moises Cabrera. Martinez Elementary, Leo Muñoz. Villaporta Elementary, Maria Paula Guzmán. Sherry Elementary, Melinda Smith. And Mr. Isaac Pidjirac from SA3.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. We do have Mr. Dr. Noel Garza and Mr. Julio Cerda, who are here representing the school board. Welcome, and thank you for your welcome.
Thank you, Martín. We are honored that the City Council and the mayor are honoring our teachers. Sheraland has always strived for quality education and a positive atmosphere, and we are honored with y'all's graciousness today. Thank you.
All right, everybody look over here at me. And then three, two, one, smile. Do one more. Three, two, one. All right, we got it.
Oh, there you go.
One more, one more, one more picture.
One more, one more.
Okay, next item on the agenda is recognition on Boys and Girls Club Director. Martín, can you give us a little information?
Absolutely, Mayor. First of all, yes, sir, thank you. You know, first of all, I want to thank all the, there's a lot of members from the Boys and Girls Club here today supporting their director, Mr. Luis Rico Toro Martinez. So, you know, behind a good director always comes great support from their staff, and just the fact that you guys are here today goes a long way in the message that you're sending to the community. So, so thank you for supporting Mr. Martinez. But this past week, there was a conference, it's a South Texas All Staff Conference. This was for the Boys and Girls Club of America, and during that conference, Mr. Martinez was named the Administrator of the Year, which is the Director of the Year for this Southwest region, and I think that's a great deal for the city of Mission. Mr. Martinez has been with us for three years already, and one of the things that we noticed with Mr. Martinez when we first interviewed him is we knew the asset that he was going to bring to the City of Mission. We knew the networking that he had, not only with the Mission School District, he's been there for many years, but also with the rest of the schools. He's brought a lot of good things to our Boys and Girls Club, and we want to congratulate him tonight for the wonderful award that he's bringing back to the City of Mission. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. If you can please step up.
Mayor, City Council, this award that we have before us, it belongs to the City of Mission, to all of us. City Council, Dr. Cañan, Nori, Mayor, Mr. Plata, Mr. Choa, thank you for everything you have done for the Boys and Girls Club. Without you guys hiring me, this would never be possible. Thank you. Whatever we do at the Boys Club is always, can I have my advisory board right here? Can you please stand and join me right here with this award? This is for all of us. The advisory board, on every, on every decision that we make, every, every decision that we make comes from the advisory board, from all of us. So, in behalf of the Mission Boys and Girls Club, we, the City of Mission, also want to thank you for making all this possible right here. Backbone of the Boys and Girls Club is our staff, all our staff. They're always on the front lines. All the programs that we run, everything that, that we do runs from the advisory board to me, to administrator, to Ms. Castillo, to AB, to a sports director, to Mr. Sanchez, academic director, all of us, and then for our coordinators and staff. All of you guys are part of this award, and it belongs to you. So it's yours, it's yours. Can you all please stand up, be recognized? Now, with Mr. Garza, Martín Garza, always in the back of helping us whatever we do, he's got two people that are very loyal to him, always working, and Ms. Ada, Aida, Lerma, and Mr. Randy Perez. Thank you for your help. I know that all the directors, in whatever we do, all of you directors, whatever department you're in, you always, we always involve you guys. So I also want to thank you for being there for us. All the directors of the City of Mission, thank you. Our, our school districts, we have Sheraland Independent School District, Mission Independent School District, then we have IDEA School District. The partnership that we do with them, I know that have right here, Dr. Lopez, thank you. Julio Cerda, I know you're somewhere right here, thank you for all the partnerships that, that we do with the Mission Boys and Girls Club, which is great. Without the numbers, yesterday's numbers, we have 1,867 members of the Boys and Girls Club, and our goal is to reach 2,000, and we still have six more months to go. So it's going to be great. It's going to be great. But again, thank you for this award. It all belongs to the City of Mission, and Mayor, I'm proud to work here in the City of Mission to be part of you guys.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, before everything, because I, because I won't get, uh, they're going to get after me. My wife.
Coach, do you think we can get the staff? Can we get the staff up here? You want to get the chair?
No, it's embarrassing. Thank you.
Three, two, one, smile. Okay, if you want more, please, double it. Three, two, one, smile. One more. Three, two, one.
Okay, we now need, we'll go ahead and go on to item seven, and we'll need a report from the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a hard egg to follow, but you'll do it.
Hello.
All right, good afternoon. On Friday, April 29th, the Chamber hosted its All for the Kids Golf Tournament at the Simaron Country Club. Proceeds from the tournament will provide over 2,000 backpacks to the children of Mission CISD. The backpacks filled with supplies will be given to students at this year's Back to School Bash. Recently, we welcomed new member, South Texas Cheer and Dance with a Ribbon Cutting. The South Texas Cheer and Dance Stallions wish to thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to attend. On Tuesday, May 31st, the Chamber will begin its new networking event called Leads Over Lunch. This event is free to members and encourages them to promote their business, meet members of the Chamber and the community, and make connections. We ask participants to prepare a 90-second pitch for their business, bring plenty of business cards, and join us for lunch. This will be held from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Chamber of Commerce. Seating is limited, so if you wish to attend, please call to RSVP. And we've had several ribbon cuttings coming up, and some that we just had in the past, and we are excited to be a part of the ones coming up. On Thursday, May 19th, we celebrated our new member with a grand opening and ribbon cutting for RE/MAX, Elite's newest location, at 2575 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 14. This Thursday, May 26th, Security First Credit Union will host our Business After Hours Networking Event at their location at 1409 East Griffin Parkway in Mission. We encourage our members to come, network, and connect. The following morning, Friday, May 27th, we will be hosting our Monthly Coffee Connections Event. As usual, it will be held at Jitter's Coffee Bar on North Conway. This business networking opportunity is hosted by Arte Suave Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. On Wednesday, June 8th, at 10:30 a.m., we will welcome Mission Family Mobile Home Park with a Ribbon Cutting. They are located in 930 West Expressway 83. And on Thursday, June 16th, at 5:30 p.m., we will join Mission's newest coffee shop, Coffee Artista, for a Ribbon Cutting at their location next to Shaw Ice Center at 1506 East Griffin Parkway, Suite C. That's all we have for this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our department reports are in the packet. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask now. If not, we do need a motion to approve the.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that might want to address the council? From Idago County, do we have anybody from Idago County? Palmhurst, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I wanted to personally invite you to our 12 annual Memorial Day Ceremony program, it will be on Monday, May 38th, at 6 o'clock, at the Veterans Memorial at the Lujia Benja Plaza Park. We have a flyer right in front of you. Also, wanted to just thank you, and thank you so much for your support and leadership. On behalf of the Mission AC Club and in memory of my father, we wanted to give you these beautiful shirts, if you could, one of y'all can, it says, "Support our veterans." So I hope to see you there Monday, and it'll be, as always, a beautiful ceremony. So thank you so much again. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address the council? If not, we'll go on to our first item on our agenda, on our planning and zoning. Mr. Tijerina?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item, item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of Lot 5, Alex Carasso's subdivision, from agricultural open interim to C3 General Business District. The applicant is Ana Laura Lopez, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve the rezoning. On April 27th of 2016, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located along the east side of Inspiration Road, approximately 500 feet south of 3 Mile. There was no public opposition during the Planning Commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the C3 zone. meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the C3 zone. Staff and our city manager are recommending approval as well. This matters now before a public hearing.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we'll ask to go ahead and accept the recommendation to adopt ordinance 4351. We do have a motion and a second to rezon and adopt the ordinance 4351. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1B is also a public hearing for rezoning of lots 1, 2, and a portion of Lot 3, 4, and 5 of Block 1, Del Monte Orchards Company Subdivision. This is from Agricultural Open Interim to C3 General Business District, and the applicant is Antonio Madrigal. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On April 27th of 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning. The property is located at the southwest corner of Schubach Road and Business Highway 83. There was no public opposition at the Planning Commission meeting. The proposal here, Mayor and Council, is a church and daycare facility on this acreage property, and they, they need a commercial zoning because the daycare's gonna be open for anyone that lives in the area or would like to have their child taken care of there. So the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the C3 zone. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not.
Mayor, I have a question.
You have any questions?
I have a question, yes. The, on the, the reason for the portion of 3, 4, and 5 is because they don't own the other portions, or?
That's the, the way the legal description reads, because if we look at the exhibit in your packets, it's, it kinda, it's just the way it's laid out. Yes, ma'am?
Want to approve?
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning and ordinance 4352. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1C, this is a public hearing of a rezoning. As you may recall, this item was remanded back to the Planning Commission. This, this rezoning is for 0.25 acre tract of land, being part of a portion of the golf course and lake reserve out of Meadow Creek Country Club Phase 1A, from Agricultural Open Interim to R2 Duplex Fourplex Residential. The applicant is Ismena Garcia, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve this ordinance. On May 11th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning. The property is located near the northeast corner of River Ben and Oasis Drive. There was public opposition during the meeting. There were several concerns voiced, such as the lot size, impact of the lot size, and existing apartments that are not maintained in the area. The board unanimously recommended approval of the R2 zone, and staff and our city manager are recommending approval. Just a little bit of background, on page 115, there is an email, we have that email before your screens, it's a very important email to us. What's circled in yellow states, the caption, "Property being sold to Abiel, Abiel and Ismena Garcia is not under HOA jurisdiction and therefore can proceed without normal HOA information request form." And this is a letter from the HOA Treasurer to the Closing Edwards Abstract Title Company. So with that, there's also, there, this would require a four-fifths vote, because there was over 20% opposition. So this is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
This is a quarter of an acre?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mayor. The dimensions are one, can you go back to exhibit? On your monitor, there's an exhibit, that's, it's 156 by 70 is the dimensions of the property. Has 156 feet of frontage and 70 feet deep, and the proposal is to construct four units with a total of eight parking spaces, two per unit, and.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? Those that are against, can you step up? State your name and address, please.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Kay Wolf, and I live at 1914 River Ben Drive in Meadow Creek. I've lived there 10 years. I chose to live there because it was a quiet neighborhood with very little traffic, a very nice area to live. I continue to live there because it is a quiet neighborhood. There has been growth out there, but this type of growth is not something that I want, and there's many of us that don't want it either. The traffic, the area where this is being proposed is heavy traffic, predominantly in the morning and in the evening. School buses, I watch school buses just about run over kids because there's so much traffic. This is just, it's my opinion. I hope that you take into consideration the safety, the neighborhood, and the fact that we would like to keep it as, as a quiet neighborhood. We don't mind the, the growth of the homes, but to put four small duplex with four small apartments, condos, whatever you want to call them, could bring quite a number of people, and traffic and parking. People can't park on both sides of the street because it's too narrow to go down. I just ask that you consider that, and consider those of us that live out there year-round, because it is our home, and we spend a lot of time there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that's against, step up and you state your name and address?
Hello, afternoon. I'm Loris Bausa, I'm the owner of the golf club, Meadow Creek, now Mission West. The only matters to me is that, well, my golf course is just near to the, to these locations. As you see, there's a tree over there. Well, the tree is, is on my property, so that red square, they haven't modified, so they have to go to the square this side. My only concern is that, as you see, the measures of 70 deep, and I want to know if, if, if in that plat, they are considering the easement, because I need, you know, the 10 feet from the, from the street through the condos, and then from the back, from my property to the condos. I don't know if in that 70, so you have only space of 50 feet. I don't know, I just want to check, and then also I require a fence, because it's true that all the condos in the right side, they try in my course as dumpster from trash, you know, and they, they say they, it's their backyard, and they play there, and they use it as a running track and bicycle track, so they don't respect that. So the only thing is, I need just to respect my space, protect my green, because there's just behind my green, you know, and I don't have a fence, and I don't know if there's the easement correctly in that side. That's the only thing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else that might be against this project? Anybody in favor? Go ahead.
Well, my name is Ismena Garcia, and I'm the developer of this property. I can answer some of the concerns. There is, between our property and the tree that Mrs. Olaguer was talking about, her tree and our property, there's 10 feet plus, there's another 10 feet that we're gonna leave in the back. So there's, from the construction to the tree, there's 20 feet in between there. As you can see, we're gonna have two parking spaces per unit plus a garage. We have, I spoke to Mr. Tejera way before, as far as what were the requirements for the parking, and, excuse me, he explained to me that there has to be enough space to reverse, which we added there. We have enough space to park and reverse on the property, so there's gonna be three parking spaces per family, per unit. We just, we're working, doing the best we can to move this ahead and, and continue.
Thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Will you be building a fence in the back to require her concern?
Yes, if she, if she, yeah, we, we talked about that, yes.
So there will be a fence?
Yes.
Is it a solid fence, or, because golf balls are gonna be flying, you know, he.
There's a hole, I think, hole 17 is in the back. Golf balls are gonna be flying. Is the fence solid, or is it the regular hurricane fence?
He, Mr. Olaguer, had spoken about a hurricane fence, so we can build a hurricane fence.
So there's no buffer between the, the, I think, part 3, if I'm correct?
The 17th, it's, I'm sorry, the 13th hole. The balls, I don't think they're gonna be hitting in that property there, but, well, that, that could be arranged either solid or hurricane. That's not, that's not, I mean, we can do that, that's not a problem.
I have a question. On this, what we have on our screen right now, it kind of shows that there's a sort of a, maybe like a golf cart.
Golf cart path.
The path, yes.
Goes right through that property, is that?
It's gonna be rebuilt next to it, because there's about, there's 20 feet between where our property ends and where the other one begins, so it's gonna be moved.
At whose cost?
Mr. Olaguer said he would do it, he, he didn't mind doing it, because it's, that is on our property, so.
You just go ahead and do your fence, and then stop going by there.
Yes.
That's what, okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else that's in favor or against this request?
I also have a question on green space, huh? Is there enough green space?
Yes. There's 10 feet on the back of green space, there's 6 feet on the sides, and then, if you can see it there in the picture, there's green space there in the middle, and more to this side, where the golf course, where the, the golf carts are gonna be passing by, on that side.
Right now, what we're looking at is a rezoning. What we'll be looking at is a single, a single lot variance, if, if the rezoning passes, and we will be looking at site plan approval for compliance with landscaping, ornamental trees, and buffer fencing and everything else at a later, at a later time. Right now, it's just the rezoning.
I understand that, but it needs to be looked at before, you know.
Yes.
So that it's not an issue later, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. We, we've talked to Ms. Garcia about it for several months now, about the requirements.
So today is just to change the zoning on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Mayor, I have one question.
Go ahead.
And it has to do with the HOA. If you could put back the evidence there that you presented on, and in the picture, the, this lot looks like, if you, if you go back to the slide, please, and see the slide that is there, my understanding, the things that the HOA extends through that property, is that correct, Mr. Tejera, Mr. Tejera?
That, as far as I'm aware of, it went through the Edwards Abstract Title Company. It was cleared. They purchased, purchased the property, they have a contract, you know.
But what does the record have? What, what do we have on file? Because I know I've seen a plat.
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
That was signed and filed.
Okay.
That indicated there that that was an HOA property. And I'm talking about, you know, not, not a recent plat, but a plat before, on the onset, when the, when the, and I'm wondering if.
That was, I believe, I remember telling you, that was an amended plat. So this is acreage property, you know, just a 0.25 acre tract of land that was sold to, to the applicant. So.
It doesn't belong to the HOAs?
Correct, it does not.
Okay, you have something to sustain that?
The email, the email, there's what we have.
Give, give, give him a copy of it.
And who's this person? I don't know who this person is.
Romelia Galindo is from Ed, Abstract Title Company, and the person from Seven Oaks, HOA is Glenn Hurndeer, who is the treasurer.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Mayor, I just have one more question.
What is your question?
Can I speak to the owner of Mission West?
Mission West?
You had stated that your only concern was a fence. I need more clarification on that.
Yeah, is it?
You don't want that type of fence, what fence would you be okay with?
The one that protects the liability of the duplex that they are doing, because if some golf ball just hit into a glass window or whatever, it's gonna affect me because I have to pay, you know?
And Ms. Garcia, are you willing to?
So it has to cover all into the, the height of that.
Of the building?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia, are you willing to work with them in reference to that?
But it has to be a strong one.
And just to clarify this, the golf course is not the green space for your condos, because they, they think they have, no, the, the other condos, the people, they, yeah, but you own that also. They think that that's his playground, you know, so.
Okay, they're gonna build the fence, and she'll get together with you when, when they're ready to build the fence, so maybe you can help them supervise the fence.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that's in favor or against this request? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Tom Clinton, I live at 1908 River Ben Drive. My wife is unable to be here, she is a licensed real estate agent. She is quite familiar with the, the track that is being discussed. This track was originally part of the green zone of the golf course. It was unplanted because it was part of the green zone of the course. While it would have to go through the legal system to determine who it was that broke these zones out and decided to peddle them on the side, this in itself, this area that's there, is part of the HOA and part of the phase. It was not zoned and included in an explicit description.
You think you can, you can furnish us with, with something to say that it was part of the HOA?
As far as Mr. Hurndeer goes, he is a Winter Texan from Canada. He has no real estate background, he has no knowledge of architectural or engineering to be able to decipher anything. Even the members on the Board of Directors are fully unaware of why he put that out.
Okay, Tejera, do you have an extra copy of those, of that letter from?
Mayor, uh, mayor.
And I'm aware that it was an email that was sent by him with no notice or word to anyone else anywhere around there, sir.
Mayor, the same person writes, "I am having difficulty establishing where this property is located to see if it falls under Seven Oaks Homes Owner Association."
That was the first email, then he responded. All the property there on Oasis Avenue, all that property. Oasis is not part of the, the Phase 1A or 1B, ma'am. River Ben, all the condos on the north side are not in the association, none of the condos there on the association, none of the, none of Oasis, at the beginning of Oasis, none of the condos on the right-hand side of River Ben. I don't need that, sir, I'm familiar with it. We found out about it well after the last hearing. None of the condos in front of Meadow Creek, which Ms. Olaguer owns, they don't belong to the association even.
Okay.
And that is correct on the other side.
Apparently, apparently, this is not going to go anywhere, but you all have the right to find whoever messed around with this. Today, we have no choice but to go ahead. I'm gonna have to recommend the approval and the advice.
Thank you.
The planning and zoning went through it twice, and that we go ahead and accept the advice from the planning and zoning and our staff to approve the, the rezoning from agriculture to R2 duplex, fourplex. Now, I would like for somebody to give me, let me have a motion that addresses that, and to approve this request, instead of going anywhere else. This is what the staff is, in essence, we cannot sign all of this request. It's a very, very, very plain that, that it has, is not part of the HOAs, and that. It's a very, very, very plain that, that it has, is not part of the HOAs, and that we can go ahead and, uh, move it from, um, agriculture to duplex, fourplex. So nobody wants to make a motion? Okay, what if I deny it? Is anybody in favor of denying this motion?
Mayor, if you accept my motion, I, I move that we deny it.
Okay, we have a motion that we go ahead and deny the request. You're not gonna be able to build it anymore. Do we have a second to that, to that motion?
Second.
We have a second from Mrs., uh, Garcia, right?
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure that-
Yes.
We have a motion and a second that we have to not, to deny the request from Ms. Esema Garcia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have four ayes, and why nay? I will vote for, for the, uh, for the adoption or the request that Ms. Esema is asking for. I'm sorry, Ms. Esema, you only have my vote. You can come back later, or you can fight a lawsuit against this, this body. Okay, next item.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Item one point one D is a public hearing for rezoning. This is for lot five, block two forty-three, Mission original townsite subdivision. The current zoning is C3 general business, and the request is to, uh, rezone it to R2 duplex, fourplex residential. Javier Flores is the applicant, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. Uh, on May eleventh, twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located near the northeast corner of Dunlap and West Fifteenth Street. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the R2 zone. Uh, staff and our city manager are recommending approval of the R2 zoning. Uh, this is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Now, the, um, ordinance number is forty-three fifty-three. And, um, anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, I would need a motion to accept the recommendation.
I move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to rezon lot five, block two forty-three, and also approve ordinance forty-three fifty-three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item E.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item one point one E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. This, uh, is for the sale on site consumption of alcoholic beverages, uh, the lounge and the pro shop at Meadow Creek. The address is thirteen hundred Circle Drive, and this is a five-point-one-seven acre tract of land out of block C1. Meadow Creek Country Club Phase One A. Uh, the zoning is PUD, and the, uh, this is, uh, circle, uh, by Circle Inspiration LLC, care of Loris Bowza. And this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. Uh, as you can see here on your monitors, uh, you go through the pictures, uh, to the exhibits, and there's some pictures of the inside of the, of the pro shop and the lounge area. Uh, on April twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is five, is located five hundred feet east of Inspiration Road, just off of J.C. Parkway and Circle Drive. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am? Go ahead. No beer?
Here, a favor.
Okay, no beer?
I'm just presenting again to you. Um, we just changed the name. Because of that, we need to renew all, all the permits, so that's why we are here for the golf carts to have that here.
You in favor of getting the permit?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, anybody else in favor or against this request? If not, we'll-
Mayor, I shall move second.
Do have a motion and a second to appro, approve the conditional use permit, and also adopt ordinance forty-three fifty-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Aye, item F?
Uh, item one point one F, Mayor, is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for the sale on site consumption of alcoholic beverages at La Nahuala Restaurant, located at two oh five Nor, North Cherry Road, Suite D, uh, being lot one of South Cherry Commercial Subdivision. The zoning is C3, and the applicant is La Nahuala LLC, care of Mario Gonzalez. Uh, if the council's inclined to approve it, this would require an ordinance and the wet zoning of the property. Uh, on April twenty-seventh of twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The property is located near the northwest corner of Cherry Road and First Street within, uh, lot one of Cherry, uh, South Cherry Commercial Subdivision. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Uh, and staff is recommending approval for one year, as is our city manager, subject to, of course, compliance with our, our, our ordinance, uh, which is forty-three twenty, that it be, uh, as per TABC, uh, regular hours. And the hours of operation, just for your information, uh, it's gonna be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Those are the days that they'll be open. They'll be closed on Sundays, and the, it would be from nine AM to twelve AM, uh, and it's a, a restaurant. This is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'll go ahead and, uh, accept the recommendation from our staff on the conditional use permit and, uh, ordinance forty-three fifty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Now, on the wet air, area, wet zone, uh, do we use the same ordinance?
Um, no, sir. I would need another ordinance number.
Forty-three fifty-six?
I move we approve forty-three fifty-six, Mayor. Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance forty-three fifty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item G?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item one point one G is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for bed and breakfast and an event center, uh, located at eleven thirteen East Mile Two Road. This is a one-point-zero-one acre tract of land out of lot twenty-nine dash ten, west addition to Cherry Land. The zoning is agricultural open interim, and the applicant is Ariel P. King. If, uh, council's inclined to approve it, it will require the adoption of an ordinance. On May eleventh of twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located at the northwest corner of Bryan Road and Mile Two. Parking will be provided on-site. There, there'll be a total of twenty-one parking spaces. There's two in the garage and nineteen around the facility. As you can see on your monitors, uh, you can see the, uh, the parking spaces on-site, and then we have another exhibit. Then, this one shows to, immediately to the north. They have an additional, uh, twenty-six spaces that will be valet parking. The valet will be the responsibility of Ms. King to whomever she rents the facility to, uh, to get the valet and, and have that refunded back to her. Um, there are several legal documents in your packets that she has put together as far as, uh, conditions, uh, whoever may lease this property and, uh, from her, and, uh, so we did, uh, we did have this meeting before the planning commission, uh, and as I stated, parking will be, be provided on-site, and, uh, valet parking immediately to the north. There was no public opposition at the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Uh, staff recommends approval for one year, as well as does our city manager. Th- this is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we'll ask that we go ahead and accept the recommendation from our staff.
I shall move, Mayor. Second.
And then we go ahead and adopt ordinance forty-three fifty-seven.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, I just wanna make sure that, uh, I make a couple of comments. I've met with Ms. King on numerous occasions. Um, lovely lady to work with. I think she's got the best, uh, heart in order to make this the right thing for the city of Mission, but a couple of the concerns that we had was making sure that the valet parking was going to be the responsibility of the applicant, in this case, the business owner, Ms., Ms. King, because, uh, when we first started, I think the responsibility was being shifted to the person who's gonna be renting out and leasing out the place for, for an event. So I just wanna make sure that that responsibility is gonna be continued, uh, being held by the property owner to make sure that they provide that valet parking and make sure that there's always some sort of valet parking when needed, right? Because of the occupants that will be, uh, attending those events. And the other is just making sure that, on that, um, Eastman, or right away, that's off of Bryan, just north of Two Mile Line, that you make sure that when you lease it out, that you put in your contract that there is no parking along Bryan Road, because we wanna make sure, you know, public safety comes first as well. We wanna make sure we provide a safe environment for people to come in and out of those valet parkings, and we don't create any issues. I know Ms. King is in favor of that, so, uh, with that, we, we recommend that we approve this.
Okay, uh, ordinance for, will be ordinance forty-three fifty-seven.
Seven.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item H?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council. Item one point one H is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for a single-family dwelling within a property zone, uh, Mobile Home and Modular District, or R5. The address is twenty-one twenty-four Pleasant Lane, uh, being lot seven, uh, and the south, at, lot seven of, uh, King's Mobile Home Park, which is unrecorded, and it's also known as the south half of, uh, tract out of Canal right away, adjacent to lot thirty-one Cherry Land Orchards. The zoning of the property, it's actually, um, R4, I apologize, and the applicant is Kathy, the-
DeBadoo.
DeBadoo, thank you. And this, uh, would require the adoption of an ordinance if, if the council's inclined to approve it. On May eleventh of twenty sixteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The property is located within King's Mobile Subdivision along the south side of Pleasant Lane. A new, uh, community development block grant home is proposed, uh, on this property. A variance to permit the home on a thirty-five by one oh three point four lot is also requested. Uh, there was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit and the variance on the lot size, and staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit and the variance as well, subject to this being transferable to others, as our city manager also is in agreement. This is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'll ask that we go ahead and approve the conditional use permit, and now ordinance I've got all day.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We'll go ahead and approve the conditional use permit, and of course, uh, ordinance forty-three fifty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Item one point one I is a public hearing on substantial amendment for Action Plan two thousand fifteen sixteen. The Citizens Advisory Committee held a public hearing on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen, to solicit input on a proposed substantial program and budget amendment to the action plan fiscal year fifteen sixteen, as required by HUD. This amendment consists of the elimination of an activity funding ten thousand dollars to Dentist Who Care Incorporated, and reallocate funds to the Mission Crime Stoppers for their crime awareness initiative that will educate the residents on how to deter crime in low-income neighborhoods throughout the city. No comments were received during the required thirty-day comment period, which ended May ninth, two thousand sixteen. SaaS recommendation is, is, is just to see if it's, uh, if there's any input from the public, so it's a public hearing.
Okay, we'll go, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing, and if anybody from the audience is interested in comment, commenting on the, on the, on the substantial amendment for the Action Plan twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. If not, uh, we'll, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to item J.
Yes, Mayor.
Public hearing for proposed action plan, uh, fiscal year sixteen seventeen.
Yes. After consideration of public service agency and department requests, the Citizens Advisory Committee made the recommendations for the proposed action plan during their meeting held on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen. As required by HUD, a notice for public hearing was published in the Progress Times on May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, to announce a public hearing and thirty-day comment period to solicit comments on the funding allocations for next fiscal year. The department will accept comments through the end of the comment period, which is June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. Attaches the notice, um, on page two thousand and six, and I'll go ahead and, um, just point out those recommendations. Under Public Services, uh, for Silver Ribbon, it's four thousand dollars. The Salvation Army, two thousand dollars. Amigos El Valle Activities, four thousand dollars. Amigos El Valle Home Delivery Meals, twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, LRGVDC Area Agency, Anaging, seven thousand dollars. Easter Seals Rio Grande Valley, four thousand dollars. Children's Advocacy Center, seven thousand dollars, for a total, for public service agencies of fifty thousand. Under the Housing Assistance Program, it's a total of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, of which rehab is fifteen thousand and reconstruction is six hundred and twenty-two. Housing Administration is eighty thousand dollars, and CDBG Program Administration is a hundred, a hundred and thirty-seven, two forty, for a total of nine hundred and four, two forty for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen allocation. This is a public hearing item as well.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's any questions, anybody that would like to participate on the public hearing? Are we giving you all too much money? For housing? Are you having that money for housing?
Yes.
Joanne, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How much did we give Silver Ribbon last year?
Silver Ribbon was allocated five thousand dollars, and then what happened this year is we were, uh, cut by nineteen thousand six hundred and ten, uh, which was where we made the cuts this year. We recommended, uh, a little bit out of each of the agencies, which brought the allocation for the public services, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
And are we, is your office able to call all those agencies if any of our, um, community members needs help?
Yes.
And they readily help them on a daily basis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, anybody else? If not, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
I move we approve it if, if action is required, Mayor.
Second.
No, no action is required this week.
Thank you.
Item, um, two point zero, and, um, the disposition of minutes, and go to item two point one, to the, to approve the city council minutes that we had on April the twenty-eighth, on May the twenty-third, and on May the seventeenth of twenty sixteen. We do need approval of those minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item three point one is the, uh, acknowledge of these minutes that, that we had on the Traffic, Traffic Safety Committee, special meeting on February the sixteenth, twenty sixteen, General Justice and Delinquency Prevention Advisory Board on February the seventeenth of twenty sixteen, Mission Economic Development Corporation on March the fifteenth, April the nineteenth, April the twenty-seventh, um, and May the twelfth. We do also have Mission Redevelopment Authority on March the twenty-second, Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone on March the twenty-second, Planning and Zoning Commission on April the thirteenth, and April the twenty-seventh, Parks and Recreation Board meeting on April the thirteenth, Citizens Advisory Committee Public Hearing, regular meeting, was held on April the twelfth, and special meeting on April the twenty-ninth, Spirit Memorial Library on April the nineteenth. We do need to acknowledge those minutes from our boards that we had.
So moved. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve those, to acknowledge those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.1, Mr. Tijerina? I guess he's outside somewhere. I'll tell you about the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.1 is a homestead exemption variance. This is a .10 acre tract of land out of the north half of Lot 30-7, West Edition to Sheri Land subdivision. The fiscal address is 207 Victory Street. The zoning is R1. The applicant is Benito Villalpando. On April 27, 2016, this home exemption variance went before the Planning Commission, and the property is located along the north side of Victory Street, about a quarter mile east of Conway Boulevard. The board unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendations. This is another CDBG home that will be constructed at this location. Staff recommends approval, subject to compliance with the homestead exemption variance provisions. The affidavit that states that it will be for the use of the family only. This is, this matter is now before you, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
We're recommending approval, Mayor. This is a homestead exemption. This is at 207 Victoria, homestead about two and three quarters north Conway, and just basically trying to reduce the impact of fees that the applicant's going to have to pay if we don't do a homestead in...
Okay, we do need a motion to approve the homestead exemption variance.
Want to approve?
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Real quick, can we go back to that string? Does that mean that all of those homes in that area are in the same situation, basically? They're unrecorded lots?
Correct, yes ma'am. That's, as far as what we look at is the, when the split occurred, and if it was, if it, the split occurred prior to our subdivision being adopted, which was in 1974, then it doesn't need a homestead exemption variance.
But our city utilities go through there?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and the street is, was paved, yes ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, last year.
Mayor, is there any way that we can take care of that whole area?
Which whole area?
That Victory and Turista Street, basically they're subdivisions that are unrecorded. So everybody there is on a, on a meets and balances, or how?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. It's a part of the 30-7 West Edition to Sheri Land. It's an old subdivision.
If anyone there needed to come in for a building permit, they wouldn't be able to because they're unrecorded?
What we, what we would look at is their deed, and look how far back it goes, and if it preexists our subdivision ordinance, we would be issued to, we would be able to issue them a permit. In this case, it did not meet that requirement, so it's coming through the homestead exemption variance. So that's not to say that all of them don't meet the pre-74.
Some lots have homes already.
Yes, the majority of those are, there's already homes on there.
This 10 acres does not have anything.
Monday?
This 10 acres does not have anything.
No, there's homes on those streets, Mayor. On both, and on those guys, there's houses already on Victory and Turista.
It's only .1.
It's only .10 acre.
So it's 4,300 square feet?
This, correct. This particular homestead exemption variance doesn't have a home on it that I'm aware of. I know Joanne is here, and this is, but this is a CDBG home that will be constructed on this property.
Right.
And is that, is that area zoned?
Yes, ma'am. It's zone R1, single-family residential.
R1?
And the minimum square feet for an R1 lot is?
Is 6,000 square feet.
So you're going to get a variance on that?
Yes, ma'am, as part of the homestead exemption variance, yes.
Okay, we'll go to item 4.2.
4.2 is also a homestead exemption variance. This is for a tract of land of the north half of the north, 11.08 acres lying west of the main canal of the United Irrigation District, and this is out of Lot 31-3, West Edition to Sheri Land subdivision. The zoning is AOI, and the applicant is Raoul Cantú Jr. This, this matter did go before the Planning Commission on April 27th. To consider this homestead exemption variance, the property is located along the east side of Los Ebanos, about a quarter mile south of Three Mile Road. The board unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendations. In this case, the property measures 146.9 feet by 719 feet in depth, so it equates to about two and a half acres. The applicant wishes to construct his single-family residence on there. We don't have any objections. We're recommending approval, subject to compliance with all the provisions of the homestead exemption variance. This is now before you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the exemptions. So do we don't need a motion to go ahead and approve the?
So moved, Mayor.
So moved, Mayor, second.
The motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Election of Mayor Protem. I would think that, I would like to recommend that we keep Norrie Garza as Mayor Protem, and I would need a motion for that.
Want to approve?
I have a motion. I'll go ahead and second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. How about that? I need to second that motion.
Thank you.
4.3, I mean 4.4 is authorization to accept the 2016 impact grant for the SSAA Library and Shielding Commission.
Yes, sir. Staff is seeking approval to accept this competitive grant in the amount of $9,895. Item's purchased with the grant funds will consist of a pick-a-book system valued at $2,895 and $7,000 worth of books.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Lerma.
Mr. Lerma, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. Mayor, item 4.5, we're requesting authorization with surplus vehicles and authorize Mayor Salinas to donate them to Mr. Sister Cities. Mayor, we've stayed away from this practice of using city vehicles. I think in the past, we've given to police units about six, seven years ago, but we've gotten a lot of requests for these type of vehicles. These vehicles were surplus by the Public Works Department. It's a 1998 Ford F-150 truck, a 2001 Ford Taurus, a 2004 Chevy truck, a 1998 International Dump Truck, a 1998 F Ford 250, and a 2004 Chevy truck. These vehicles are not only high mileage, Mayor, they're really out of service. Our departments cannot use them anymore. We did, I think Mr. Garza to the City Mayor's Office, offered them to other departments to see if anybody could use them for any way, shape, or form, and they were not being able to use. So at this time, we'd like to request that we allow the Sister City Program to use them for our programs that we've had for, throughout the years. So we are requesting authorization with surplus of vehicles and allow Mayor Salinas to donate them to our sister cities.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second, go ahead and authorize the surplus. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
4.6?
Item 4.6, we request an authorization to accept donation of firefighter gear for the City of West Laco and to donate to San Fernando Tamalipas. As you all are aware, through our Sister City Program, Mayor, we continuously request equipment and vehicles throughout the state of Texas. We were lucky that the City of West Laco had some equipment that they're not using. So we, at this time, we took action, took advantage of that situation, so we're requesting authorization to accept a donation, and the donation, it's miscellaneous firefighter equipment, gloves, helmets, it's 17 pair of gloves, tin coats, four pair of boots, some raincoats, and some gnome protective gear that they use, out of service here in the state of Texas and throughout the United States. So we'd like to use them, so we're requesting the donation, or to accept the donation of the City of West Laco and to authorize Mayor Salinas to donate them to the City of San Fernando, which is one of our cities.
So moved, Mayor, second.
We do have a second to go ahead and accept the donation, and also to declare surplus and donate it to San Fernando.
Mayor, we do have Maestra Nelda Cardosa, if she can come up, and the Chief Martin Sanchez from the Cities of San Fernando. Maestra Cardosa runs the volunteer program, la maestra.
Muy buenas tardes. Gusto en conocerlo personalmente señor Norberto y a todo su cabildo. Les traemos un saludo de parte del presidente municipal. No pudo asistir porque ustedes saben la política ahorita anda ya, a todo lo que da porque ya nos quedó una semana. Y yo como presidente del patronato de los bomberos, vengo en representación del municipio y del, y del patronato y todos los compañeros bomberos que son los que tienen visa, son los que nos pudieron acompañar. Y pues les damos las gracias de corazón. Muchísimas gracias por todo lo que nos han ayudado, que yo tengo apenas un año de que entré como presidenta del patronato, pero hemos estado gestionando este con el señor Jesse, para ver si nos pueden donar algo a nosotros allá, porque pues sí carecemos de algunas cosas. Y ahorita pues nos van a dotar de, de botas, guantes, cosas que...
Todo lo que viene de West Laco y ustedes.
Todos de nosotros, ay, muchísimas gracias. Este, y pues esperamos que seamos ciudades hermanas por mucho tiempo. Muchísimas gracias por todo. Les traemos un reconocimiento de...
Buenas, buenas tardes, señor mayor. Mi nombre es Martin Sanchez, soy el jefe del Departamento de Bomberos de la ciudad. Y bueno, en nombre de mis compañeros y del presidente, la presidencia municipal, le tenemos un reconocimiento, va, por el apoyo de, que nos brindan, pues cada que pueden, verdad? Y pues queremos hacer entrega de él. Este, a paso mayor.
Muchas gracias. Okay, salto.
And to those in attendance, basically, Chief Martin Sanchez and Ms. Cardosa, she runs the volunteer program there in the city of San Fernando. So on their behalf, they just wanted to thank the city and mayor and Mr. Garza for the donation of the equipment. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Mayor, be so kind, we can sign the letters, because they are leaving today.
Okay, I need to, I need to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Thank you. 4.8?
It's 4.7, Mayor.
4.7, Mr. David Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'll be presenting this in lieu of Alex Me, he's out of town. It's item 4.7, authorization to declare item as surplus for disposal. Staff is seeking approval for to declare attached list items as surplus. This item is not in working condition, has been replaced, is of no use to the department. The MDC Board authorized staff to declare the item as surplus for disposal at the meeting of May 17, 2016.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have, we have a motion, a second to go ahead and declare item as surplus for disposal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Okay.
4.8?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.8 is approval of a resolution for the City of Mission on finding the AEP Texas Central Company. On April 6, 2016, AEP Texas Central Company filed an application for approval of distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates with each of the cities in their service area. This resolution authorizes the city to join with the cities served by AEP, which is our TCAP program, to include the, and retain the law firm of Lloyd Goslink and consultants to evaluate the filing, determining whether the filing complies with law, and if lawful, to determine what further strategy included settlement to pursue. So staff recommendation on this is the approval of the attached resolution.
Resolution 1454.
I move for approval.
Second.
The motion is second to approve resolution 1454. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 4.9?
Yes, 4.9 is a similar, this is, the attached ordinance denies the proposed change for the rates of the Sheri Land Utilities LP. The city received a rate filing package and statement of intent of change rates for Sheri Land Utilities LP with the proposed effective date of June 3, 2016. This ordinance authorized the city to deny Sheri Land's proposed rate increase, and further authorizes the city to retain legal counsel and consulting services. Staff recommendation is the approval of this ordinance.
So moved, Mayor, second.
Order is 4359?
4359 or 4358?
59.
Okay, we don't need a motion to approve, ordinance 4359.
So moved, Mayor, second.
Against, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against motion carries. Let me forget, I was with the Zora. 14?
Yes, item 410 is approvals, a resolution attached. It's the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council has approached the city about participating in Valley City Gas Coalition to address a 2016 cost of service adjustment tariff filed by the Texas Gas Service Company. The Texas Gas Service filing seeks to increase natural gas rates to all customers residing in the city. The Coalition will conduct a review of the company's application and will hire direct legal counsel and consultants to prepare a response and to negotiate the Texas Gas Service Coalition and direct any necessary litigation. It is noted that the settlement agreement between the city and Texas Gas Service dated August 14, 2009, provides costs incurred by cities associated with this proceeding are to be reimbursed by the company. And we have Mr. Ken Jones here to represent Lower Rio Grande Valley.
So moved, Mayor.
The resolution number is what?
1458. 55.
1455. We do have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1455. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
411?
Mayor and City Council, the City of Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to accept grant funds from the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grant Program for the purchase of SWAT tactical equipment. The Mission Police Department was awarded $27,000, which will be used to purchase 12 tactical helmets, 12 headsets for communication devices, and two ballistic shields. These items will be utilized for our SWAT team members and other first responders during critical incidents. The total cost of our project is $34,067.20, of which $7,067 will be paid through our drug forfeiture accounts. Staff is requesting authorization to accept the aforementioned grant funds, which is $27,000.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second to go ahead and accept the funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Benson? 412?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.12, staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for the construction of bathroom and changing room facility at the Anufo Tatán Rodriguez Park. Staff recommendation is authorization to solicit our bids.
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4.13, staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for the mowing and litter debris removal for the city, on city rightaways. Service will include in all supervision, labor, materials, supplies, tools, and equipment necessary for the cleaning and clearing, beloding, and disposal of trash, debris, rubbish, organic debris, municipal solid waste, special wastes, and tires. The contractor will also be mowing all grasses, weeds, and underbrush. Staff's recommendation is authorization to solicit bids.
So moved, second.
We do have motion, the second to go ahead and authorize for staff, the contractor party for the bidding process. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lovely. Lovely.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor, City Council members. Um, item four-point-fourteen is the authorization to solicit bids for the overlay of various streets throughout the City of Mission. Against, staff seeking authorization to solicit bids, uh, for the overlay of various streets throughout the City of Mission. The services are required, uh, by the Streets Department in order to improve various streets that need, uh, are in need of repair. Uh, locations include, uh, Los Ebanos, four ninety-five to Two Mile Line Road, Stewart Road, US eighty-three to Business eighty-three, Stewart Road, uh, four ninety-five to Mile Two Road, and East Twenty-Eighth Street, uh, Sherwood to Taylor Road. Against, staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids for these, uh, streets.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, item, uh, four-point-fifteen is the authorization to solicit bids for St. Clair Road widening improvements. St. Clair Road widening improvements, uh, will be constructed, uh, seven hundred linear feet east from Business Parkway Drive to match existing roadway, uh, roadway width, uh, towards the, the hospital, uh, parking lot and towards FM three ninety-six. The new widening, uh, will improve traffic flow from Business, uh, Park Drive to Anzaldua Highway, FM three ninety-six. The approximate cost of this project construction is seventy-two thousand dollars. Against, staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids for this project.
So moved. Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four-six, four-seventeen?
Sixteen.
Yes, four-six.
Four-sixteen.
It's gonna be four-sixteen, Mayor, the approval of substantial amendment for the Action Plan twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
I'm sorry. So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the substantial amendments for the Action Plan twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four-seventeen is for the acceptance of the monthly tax report for the month of April two thousand and sixteen. The twenty sixteen total adjusted tax levy was nineteen million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. And the amount of collections as of April thirtieth, twenty sixteen is seventeen million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nine cents, which represents ninety-three point ninety-nine percent of the total tax levy. This item is now before you.
Do they have motion to approve, um, the text election report?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four-eighteen?
Item four-eighteen is for the approval of the April two thousand and sixteen financial statements. The adjusted total beginning fund balance for all funds was twenty-seven million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Total revenues for the period were eight million, one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and three dollars, and total expenses were five million, seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, leaving an ending fund balance of thirty million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Total assets for the period are one hundred and forty-nine million, one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Total liabilities are fifty-eight million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, resulting in total net assets of ninety million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. This item is now before you.
Second.
A motion in second to approve the financial statement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four-nineteen?
Item four-nineteen is the approval of the attached budget amendments. There are four requests. The first item is in the General Fund. This request is to set up the budget for the Universal Service Fund rebate, also known as E-Rate Funds, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars in revenues and appropriations. These funds are an annual rebate that is received by the Mission Superior Memorial Library, and funds will be used to purchase library books and supplies for the library.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have, uh, a couple more.
Oh, sorry.
Next, we have two requests from the Designative Purpose Fund, which is our grant fund. The first item is to set up the budget for the twenty sixteen impact grant for the Mission Library from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, which was, uh, just accepted as item four-point-four this evening, in the amount of nine thousand eight ninety-five in revenues and appropriations. And these funds will be used to purchase library books and equipment for the library. Secondly, in the grant fund, we also have a request to set up the budget for the twenty fifteen State Homeland Security Grant for the Mission Police Department, which was also brought forward as item four-eleven, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand in revenues and appropriations. These funds will be used to purchase equipment for the Police Department SWAT team. And finally, we have a budget request from MDC Fund in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars of appropriations. This request is to set up the budget for the Center for Education and Economic Development operational expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. MDC Board approved this amendment on May seventeen. This item is now before you.
Move for approval.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the budget amendments that we had, General Fund, Designative Purpose Fund, and the MDC Fund? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four-twenty?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, we do have item four-point-twenty. Four-point-twenty is the authorization to solicit for competitive proposals for a municipal event center. A staff is seeking authorization to solicit proposals for the construction of a municipal event center and all applicable utility infrastructure. The multi-purpose event center will offer sufficient floor area to accommodate several hundred attendees for large venue events, while also having capability to offer several meeting rooms for smaller events. The municipal event will serve as a resource to the residents while attracting new visitors and businesses to the City of Mission. This new activity is expected to have a significant economic impact to the City of Mission. The City of Mission is currently in the process of securing financing and is in negotiations to acquire the necessary land. Our prospect is, uh, proposals will be subject to the city obtaining, obviously, the required financing and the land for the project. Uh, we are, um, asking for the approval of this agenda item, Mayor.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion to, to approve, um, the solicit for competitive bidding for the Mission Event Center? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Do you have any comments, Mister Garza?
Uh, no, sir, no comments.
I don't have any comments either. Um, without going to our executive session...
Mayor, I moved it. We move into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-zero-one, Mayor.
A motion in second to go into executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
I move to reconvene, Mayor.
A motion in second to reconvene.
Uh, me and I left my, I left my agenda.
Aye.
If I could just, it's all right. I don't need it. I don't need it. I don't need it. It's fine.
We have item A, um, we have, um, discussed the, um, the items, and we have some recommendations.
Yes, Mister Mayor, if, uh, might be?
Item H?
Item seven-point-one-A, if the council's inclined to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate and retain outside legal counsel for the purpose of representing the city with regards to all issues, including all actions necessary to properly represent the city in the lawsuit caption, Highmark Construction Company LLC versus City of Mission, C seventeen fifty-two dash sixteen dash F.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item B?
Item seven-point-two-A, Mister Mayor, uh, if the council's inclined to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of a point zero-three-four acre tract of land out of Lot One, El Rice subdivision, in addition to the City of Mission, Hidalgo County, Texas, according to MAP or Platte recorded in volume twenty-seven, page one eighty-six-B, map records of Hidalgo County, Texas, for the purpose of a ten-foot utility easement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item seven-point-two-B, if the council's inclined to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition and subsequent conveyance pursuant to Texas Local Government Code two seventy-two point zero-zero-one-L to United Irrigation District of a point zero-seven acre tract of land out of Lot twenty-nine dash one, West Edition de Sheri Land subdivision, according to MAP or Platte recorded in volume one, page six, map records of Hidalgo County, Texas, for the public purpose of completion of Inspiration Road expansion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item seven-point-two-C, Mayor, if the council's inclined to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to convey to the United Irrigation District pursuant to Texas Local Government Code two seventy-two point zero-zero-one-L, a point zero-seven acre tract... I'm sorry, a point one-six acre tract of land out of Lot twenty-nine dash one, West Edition de Sheri Land subdivision, according to MAP or Platte recorded in volume one, page six, map records of Hidalgo County, Texas, for the public purpose of completion of Inspiration Road.
So moved. Second.
Do we have a motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item, Mister, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm on it, sir.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.